Good evening. Welcome to the October 9th, 2017, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Craig Lynch will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Craig.
Good morning, Father. May I thank you for this day and all the blessings you give us today, and pray that we use this day to honor you and be all of your glory. Good Father, we have so many that are on our hearts and minds, the devastation of all the storms, the flooding victims, the confirmation, the shootings in Los Angeles. We just lift all those people and almost hurt them well to you, good Father. We don't know what to ask for. We just put it all on our hands and we just, we hurt all those people. We pray that you just be with them. Thanks for your very heart, good Father. And we always do a very humane commission play, but it's advantageous for this county. We love Rutherford County. We all, we all want this county to be the top county in the state today. The prayers of the district legislators, we, we worship you, good Father.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. All the roll, please, Gail.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Aberwater.
Here.
Lee Vogel.
Here.
David Jones.
Mike Kush.
Mike Kush.
Craig Lynch.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Charlotte P.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Mike Vod. Jeff Phillips.
Present.
Have a call.
Thank you. At this time, we need to approve the minutes for our September 25th meeting. I'll call on our Vice Chair, Mike Kush, for the reading of those minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have reviewed the meeting minutes. They seem to be in order, and I would make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the September 25th meeting minutes. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye. Motion carries. We have no items withdrawn, so we have a full slate of three items tonight. Item 6A, items that are on our agenda for rezoning requests that are scheduled for public hearings. 6A1, item 17- A025, Edwin Brett Nancel, Nance, I'm sorry, location 10067 Concord Road. Commission District is 8, the county commissioner is Pettis Reed. Site of the site is approximately four acres. Tax map 161. Existing zoning is RM for residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CN, commercial neighborhood. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, and good evening, Commission members. As you stated, this property is located on Concord Road. As you look at the map, either in your agenda packets on your iPads or on the map that's on the screen before you, you can see it's at the intersection of Versailles and Concord, in that, right in that little corner there. The applicant proposes to utilize the property in a manner similar to what it was used for in the past, which was namely a neighborhood store. The applicant provided the description that is included in your agenda packets. I won't read that verbatim. Suffice it to state that that particular store has been there for quite a considerable time. So, he's also submitted a layout of the property. The structure where the market will be housed is already in existence. The existing structure is a non-conforming structure due to the location within the required setbacks. You can see it's pretty well tucked near the front property line near Concord Road. Regardless of what the property is zoned, that's still going to be the case. Actually, if this property is rezoned, the commercial neighborhood zone actually has a less front setback, a smaller front setback of 30 foot as opposed to the RM zone, which is 40. So, in that sense, it's actually in, more in compliance than what it would be today under the RM zoning. After discussions with the applicant, staff felt that commercial neighborhood was the most appropriate zoning classification to request for this particular property. Commercial neighborhood does allow for commercial uses at a more neighborhood-type scale, more neighborhood-friendly scale, but also allows neighborhood, I'm sorry, and also allows for residential uses. It's the only commercial zone that would allow for residential uses. And this zone is also the most restrictive of the three commercial zones. Really, as far as the property is concerned, the applicant isn't proposing to really make any changes to it. Access would be the same, any landscaping and everything. I mean, we would typically see a site plan for something like this just to make sure that it can meet the county's requirements, at least to the extent possible. Again, the non-conforming issue, that's going to exist regardless of what the property is zoned. And then performance standards, of course, they would have to meet that regardless as far as noise, dust, odors, those kind of things. This property is located within the suburban belt character area in our comprehensive plan. It's located along an urban-styled corridor, which is Concord Road, which is, I believe, 269 as well, State Route 269. It is possible to, and it's something that was kind of discussed briefly with the applicant, you know, they could ask for the whole thing or just a portion of the property be zoned. From staff's standpoint, either way, I'm fairly comfortable with it. I think it's a, you know, just bringing back the store that was there and using in that manner, I think is an appropriate use for this area. So, staff did recommend approval of that. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Doug. Any questions for staff?
About four, hold on a second. It's about, about four acres, yes, sir.
Any other questions? At this time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 17- A025, Edwin Brent Nance. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. State your name and address, please.
My name's Edwin Brett Nance. I'm the owner of the property, have been for a while. It's always belonged to my family. We're just trying to get it back the way it used to be. That's all I know to tell you.
A store?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. A small country store. No alcohol, nothing like that.
Yes?
No, sir.
Is there a reason that you want to do the entire four acres as opposed to just the portion of it?
Well, that's the way it used to be in the 90s, is when they took this off, and I just want to get it back the way it was. And in case we had an event or something, I've got parking spaces, but they would be able to park in the field, and I have a parking lot up at the barn that people could walk from. That's the reason.
Do you want to look, sir?
Sir?
Do you want to look, sir?
No, sir. Well, yeah, we'll put one in there.
Any other questions for Mr. Nance? Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Good evening. My name is Eddie Makin. I reside at 9970 Concord Road. My property is just right across Concord from this property in discussion, and I would say, guesstimating my partial of slightly over seven acres, faces, from a square footage standpoint, faces probably about 70 percent of this partial that's up for discussion. My house, I purchased, just to give you a little bit of the history, I purchased a property in 1996, planned for to be a retirement home. I retired in 2011, which is when I built my home there. It's built up on a high rise. It's kind of hard to see in the photo there, Google map, but I actually looked down upon the property that's being discussed, and when the leaves are off the trees, due to a tree line, I can actually see the store from my front porch also. I'm a strong proponent of when somebody owns a piece of property, as long as it doesn't violate codes or violate the safety or environmental issues that an individual should be able to do with it what they wish. I am strongly in support of this store or this rezoning. I think it would be great for the community. We, you know, we need a place in that area, Versailles, as it's known, for us to gather. It's within walking distance for me and my children to walk across and whether we get a sandwich or just sit and meet with others. So, I'm highly in favor of that. So, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I'd love to hear.
Have a motion to approve and a second. Commissioner Reed.
Mr. Chairman, before we take this vote, I'd like to tell the rest of the Commission that I will not be voting on this issue due to the fact that I'm kin to the applicant's, both his, both his parents, his mother and father. You know, when you live in a community like this, our family trees turned out to be family bushes, and just about everybody in that community is kin in some way, and when we all showed up in that same community around 1805 and 1807, we evidently come in on the same wagon train. So, we're all pretty much kin, and rather to cause any conflict to the applicant and to this property, I'd rather not be involved as far as the vote is concerned. But I will say, due to the fact of what he's trying to do there, he is to be commended for it because this property has been a part of that community since 1710, 1711, when French trappers come into that community and started a trading post with the Native Americans in that area. So, there has been trading and a post of some sort and a store in that one spot since that time here in Rutherford County. At that time, it was really Green County, North Carolina, when it was first start, and then it was Williamson County and now Rutherford County. At one time, the store was closed, as he has said, but he's wanting to bring it back just as the family has had it all these many years. The 28th Tennessee and Company C of the Confederate Army was formed right under some oak trees right in front of that store and organized, and most of the individuals that fought in that battle and the wars, and they left from there going to Stones River, and then they went on into Shiloh, and they went on into Atlanta, Chickamauga, and places like that, left from that store right there, and they served the communities of Rock Vale and Versailles. So, what he has done, he's totally remodeled that store, going by codes already. There is a new septic system in there, a new, whole new process, which uses a lot of that acreage back there in the back to make that work in there. And then, in November, they had a grand opening. I don't know if you remember it or not, but Versailles Store Day was declared by our mayor back in November, and there was a huge crowd of people that covered that entire four acres. So, I basically am saying I'm commending this family for bringing back this country store to this community and bringing commerce once again back to this area.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Other comments? We have a motion and a second to approve item 17- A025 for Edwin Nance. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you. This will be presented to the full county commission on Thursday, November the 16th for final approval. Item 682, 17- A026, Sims Commercial Realtors and Auctioneers by Mr. Larry Sims. Location 301 Double Springs Road. Commission District is 21. County Commissioner is Shanto Sorino. The size of the site is approximately two acres. Tax map 103. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is CG for commercial service, commercial general, I'm sorry. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. The applicant, as you stated, is proposing to zone this property primarily, well, to a commercial general primarily for speculative purposes. When the applicant first approached staff, he asked for light industrial zoning. After considering one of the potential uses that the applicant identified, which was more of a community assembly type use, staff recommended one of the commercial zones as light industrial would only allow that type of use by special exception from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Small and medium community assembly, up to 500 people, are allowed by right in the commercial zones, however. Large community assemblies do have to have special exception approval as well, but I think the uses that he was contemplating, the commercial general probably was the one that most closely resembled some of the other uses he had. Staff was also not comfortable with any type of industrial zoning in this area. When I talked to the applicant about that, I essentially told him that, you know, this would be pretty much the only industrially-zoned type property in this area. I just wasn't very comfortable with that, so he agreed to go for commercial general. There is an existing single-family structure on the property currently. The property, zoning this property, commercial general, would render the use as non-conforming. Now, that being said, as long as the use continued and didn't discontinue for a period of longer than 30 months, or if it was redeveloped, that use can continue. So, just because it's zoned, the property can still be used for residential purposes, again, provided it doesn't, it's not discontinued or redeveloped, discontinued for over 30 months. If that were to happen, or if the property were to be redeveloped, then that non-conforming status would no longer be valid. Access to the property is currently from Double Springs Road. Any new development on this property would have to adhere to the current standards listed in our zoning ordinance in regards to access and/or parking. Any access to John Bragg Highway would require TDOT approval. Landscaping, this would require a Type 2 buffer adjacent to the RM and AR. As you saw, there's actually some agricultural zone property in the area as well, next to this property, and the performance standards also would apply to this. Commercial zoning within the city limits of Murfreesboro is located about 700 feet to the west of the subject property. I included a map of the Murfreesboro zoning in your agenda packets, which you can find on your iPads. John Bragg Highway is a major four-lane arterial that carries over 14,000 vehicles per day. I don't believe that the long-term use of this property is going to be residential, so as far as commercial zoning goes, I feel fairly comfortable with that, a lot more than I did with industrial zoning. So, we did recommend approval of this request. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is present.
Questions for staff at this time? Mr. Sims, do you have any comments?
Thank you, Chairman, and people of the planning commission. I'm Larry Sims. I live at 537 East Main Street. I had a client that we bought this property for in 2010, and we've kind of been wrestling with it, had some ideas, been renting the house out. We've had several opportunities, people looking at it, to build kind of a warehouse-type building on it for events or functions, and I've been working with Bill Hoddlestone. We laid out a building, and you might have a diagram, about 8,000 square feet. You could be even more than that, and it'll have 88 parking spaces. And so, in doing that, we've had the opportunity of people looking for stuff like that. A lot of times, it's not already zoned or doesn't have a plan, then it's a little hard to convince somebody to go ahead and move forward. So, anyway, we thought it was a good time. It's a good area. It's a progressive area. Things need to be changed in that area, so we thought it was a good time to maybe bring this for y'all and see if y'all felt the same way we did about it. Did anybody have any questions? It's got 2,000 feet of road frontage on John Bragg Highway, and it does have an entrance off of John Bragg going into the property. The property next door, and they've used this a little bit, they run a haunted, I don't think it's called a haunted, what's it?
Haunted Woods.
Haunted Woods, which is good. So, anyway, they, they've been very cooperative, and we've tried to work with them, too. So, I, I think that thing's going to lend itself for some really nice things going on out there. So, we're just kind of starting it, really.
You said you did have a plan for this property?
Yeah, we had a plan, yes.
Go over that again?
Well, what we've got, we're showing a building of 8,000 square feet with 88 parking spaces, and that also leaves the existing house that's there. Let's see where I have that at. I've got it here somewhere. Oh, yeah, he's got it right there. Thanks for a pretty good plan.
of all, when I was putting the agenda together, I guess I just overlooked that in the file, so I apologize that that wasn't on your iPads. Normally, when I see a concept plan, I'll scan it and make sure it gets into your iPad, so for that, I apologize. The other thing that I would mention is, of course, this is a non-binding plan. I think everybody understands that, that it's just simply conceptual. So, there's a lot of factors that go into that as far as soil location, you know, topography, all kinds of different things as far as I have it laid out. So, just as an FYI.
Any other questions of Mr. Sims while he's up here?
If not, I appreciate your time. Thank you, thank you.
At this time, I'll declare a public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak on item 17- A026 for Larry Sims, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Commissioners?
I agree.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17- A026. Any other comments? I'm sorry. All those in favor of that motion to approve, please say aye. Any opposition? Motion to approve carries. Thank you.
Sir, are we talking about plans for 104 Double Springs Road? Don't talk to me, don't come up and down the road?
That's next.
Okay.
What did he just say? He's wanting the next public hearing, so.
He said Double Springs, right?
Yeah, the other one's on Double Springs, too. They're both on Double Springs.
Okay. Next on our agenda is item 6A3, 17- A027, N. and H. Partnership by Mr. Shannon Hicks. Location 3306 East Main Street. Commission District is 4. The county commissioner is Robert P. Size of the site is approximately four and a half acres, and approximately three and a half of those are to be rezoned. Tax map is 103E. Existing zoning is RM, residential medium density. Proposed zoning is commercial general CG. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. And I will say, it's a little unusual when we see two zoning applications back-to-back that are actually on the same stretch of road, just on other sides of John Bragg Highway, so I, it's easy to get these confused. The applicant is looking to zone a portion of the property. It's about four and a half acres in size, and again, it's located on the corner of Double Springs, you can see on the map either in your agenda packet or on the screen, and East Main Street. The property, again, is about four and a half acres. They're looking to zone approximately three and a half acres of that property to commercial general in order to operate a home-building contractor's office and truck slash equipment storage. The remaining acre of land, you can see there's an existing house on the property. The, that remaining acre would still be zoned RM, which it currently is zoned, and would contain the existing house. According to the information provided by the applicant, the existing metal garage on the property would be used to maintain seven dump trucks until a new building is constructed that can accommodate the height of those trucks. The new building would be used for storage and maintenance of the vehicles, along with an office and restroom space. The existing building would then be used for surplus construction materials, storage of trailers, and things of that nature. There is a concept plan and additional information from the applicant that can be found in your agenda packets. Access and parking, according to the applicant's concept plan, access to the rezoned area, what he's proposing, would be from Double Springs Road. The existing house would continue to utilize driveway along East Main Street. Of course, any new development of the property would have to adhere to the current standards in the zoning ordinance regarding access and parking. For landscaping, commercial general zone properties, really any commercial zone properties, are required to install a Type 2 buffer adjacent to any property that's zoned residentially, RM in this case. So, a landscape plan would be required along with any site plan, again, should this application be approved, and again, the performance standards would apply to this as well. I spoke with the applicant on this one. I pretty much told him I didn't have a strong opinion one way or the other on this one, so I'm just remaining neutral as far as that's concerned. There is some additional non-residential zoning nearby. It's about 1,000 feet in either direction. With that being said, the comprehensive plan does recommend non-residential uses in general urban areas and along suburban corridors. If this application is approved, however, I would expect to see a significant buffer to the surrounding properties. We did receive several phone calls about this. Really, of the three applications we had tonight, this was the one I received the most phone calls about, and I see several people in the audience, and I imagine most of them have stayed to discuss this particular application. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for staff? Any feedback from Commissioner P.?
No, sir, I have not talked to Commissioner P.
Doug, question. The perimeter is all RM?
Around it, you're talking about? Yes, sir. Yeah, all, surrounding this property is all residential medium density. That's correct.
Okay, so, the closest commercial venture would be where? Down?
If you go to the west or to the east, about 1,000 feet in either direction, roughly a quarter mile. Now, if you were to go south, down toward John Bragg Highway, of course, on the other side, there's not, there's commercial zoning not too far in that area. But, I mean, just along East Main Street in that general area, it's about 1,000 feet in either direction.
What's directly across the street? Is that, is that a developed subdivision, or is that raw land? It's a field?
Are you talking across East Main or across Double?
Across East Main, I guess. No.
It's just a...
Where's your nor, where's your north area? Yeah, across Main Street. Yeah.
Mike's pulling up an aerial photo.
Okay, is this raw land?
Yes, sir.
Is Mr. Hicks here?
I have a question.
Please come forward, Mr. Hicks.
Doug, do you know if the applicant owns the land or if it's, their purchase is contingent on the rezoning?
Maybe he owns it. Let me double-check. I mean, he's coming up right now, but I'm fairly certain he actually owns the property. No, I'm sorry. He's looking, as there is a, we had a, we have an attorney letter, in fact, in here that the owner of the property granted him to make the application, so he's looking to buy it. Excuse me.
Shannon Hicks, owner of the property at 3306 Woodbury Pike. We've been looking for a piece of property for a couple of years. I've spoken with Mike and Doug many times about several different pieces of property, trying to find a place where that we can have a wood, wooded area protecting us on three sides, build buildings to seal it off along with the vegetation and the fencing. Just want a place to be able to get out of the way, not have it scattered at job sites, not have it parked at our houses where we're in subdivisions. Trying to find a place close to town to use that. We are routinely up and down Main Street. We have not asked for an access through there yet. There is an AT&amp;T main wire that goes across the front of the property. That will have to be moved, raised. It's about 10 feet high, so to get any vehicle through there of any size would be... It's about 10 feet high, so to get any vehicle through there of any size would be very difficult. That's the reason we wanted to use the current Double Springs access.
Questions for Mr. Hicks?
Dump trucks, sir. What type of equipment and how many trucks?
Well, for example, I own a Skid steer. I own a couple, three different trailers, that I want a place to have a storage, covered storage, to keep them out of the weather. My partner has seven dump trucks that we plan on storing there. But that would be storage. We're not hauling there. They would leave in the morning and come back early afternoon. No, sir, I have not. I spoke with my commissioner. He suggested I go speak with Bud's Tire, Bud. I did. Bud was telling me that that was used as a commercial property years ago. They raised minnows there. I had vehicles coming and going. He said that he would support it, so I didn't go any further at that point.
Not that I'm aware of, but, I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not downing what he's saying, but nothing that I remember saying, no.
Ma'am, did you have a question? Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Hicks?
When you say you got seven dump trucks, you're gonna dump one?
No.
When you're bringing this many trucks, and how are you planning to fix this as far as the road is concerned in there, as far as your pay? Are you gonna pave it? Are you gonna use gravel?
Initially, it will be gravelled. We would like to concrete it in time. That entrance will have to be widened a little bit. It's set up to where that, the way the driveway comes off of Double Springs, it's not a bright angle. It's, comes back, so we would straighten that, widen it, to make it an easy and convenient turn.
Would you say that the majority of your trucks use East Main or John Bragg?
We've been working for the past year on East Main. I think that routinely, our traffic would leave Double Springs back to John Bragg and go out that way.
If I could interject something. As far as the material for the parking area, county requirements are for paving on the front end, so you're aware of that.
Where are you currently on East Main? And do you plan on making any improvements to Double Springs? Because I'm familiar with that area, and dump trucks don't, would not work very well.
Have not made any commitments, have not been asked to make any on Double Springs. Our intention is to enter and exit ultimately from Main Street once we can work with AT&amp;T to move that phone line.
Where are you currently on Main Street?
We're back into town, 2706, excuse me, 2705, 2705, Main Street.
Where are you at in the process of your conversation with AT&amp;T? Have they given you any indication, the timeframe, how long that would take?
Very preliminary. Is it possible? Is it feasible? They would have to do a study. We would have to submit an application, so forth, that wouldn't be started until it was approved here.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Hicks. This time, I'll declare the public hearing open for item 17-A027, N&amp;H Partnership for Mr. Shannon Hicks. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
My name's Steve Todd. I own the farm across the street at 3303 East Main. I grew up there. I agreed with the comment about family and change, and Murphy'sboro's really changing, but my concern about this was when I read the commercial general district rules, it indicated that these districts should be well separated from residential districts. And this particular lot is surrounded by houses. Now, mine's a farm across the street, but there are several houses on Double Springs there, and beside, going down that road. And the only commercial places, besides the mena place when I was a little boy, too, were Bud Mitchell's, and what used to be the Little Brown Jug, and is now Handlebars. Those are the only two places on either end. So I hate to say that I'm opposed, but I don't quite understand, and I'm a novice at this, so I don't understand when it says they should be well separated. I mean, this is gonna be plopped right in the middle of a residential zone. So I don't know if there's a different zoning that would fit better. And again, from a standpoint of my concern, I was hoping it wasn't gonna be a restaurant or a mini-mart or a Dollar General, so I don't know that I want to say I'm opposed, but I guess I would say I'm opposed to the commercial general, just based on the definition.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Five o'clock, six o'clock, seven o'clock in the morning, the last thing I want, one up down my road is five to six, seven to eight.
Please come forward and state your name and address, please.
Sorry?
It's okay.
For the party, I have no teeth. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My name's Shannon Hodges. I live at 104 Double Springs Road. I've been there since I was about three, and the last thing I want is dump trucks coming up and down my road, up and down here. You put up a 20-foot fence, and you're not gonna knock out the dust, you're not gonna knock out the noise. If you build a 50-foot derm, you don't have any room left to play. Commercial, sure, Bud's is commercial, but it's got people like you and me and us coming up and down, not dump trucks coming and going all day long, up in the morning, down in the evening. It's not commercial. Bud's is a business. Attack Place and the bar is a business. But it's, it's commercial because it's a business, but it's not a construction business. I've been to places that have five, six, seven dump trucks, and you go up and down the road beside them, and they don't look clean, and there's all kind of dust. I don't really want that in my, you know, residential neighborhood, this word spot zoning. I too have looked it up, and it looks to me like it's pretty much spot zoning, 1,000 this way and 1,000 this way. But there's not any here, you know? I've been there since a long, long time, '64, '65. I don't really want it. I don't think my neighbors that are here either want it. Like he said, he came and bought it, and he paid a lot of money for it, $300,000, but he didn't come to any of us first. That would have been nice.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello. My name's William Smutman. I live at 3403 East Main Street, kinda catty-cornered across the road. I'm concerned about the road. I don't see how that road's gonna handle those truck, dump trucks. You come in from John Bragg, you got a big S curve there from East Main, you got a little narrow road you gotta come in there. He talks about a shed. There's no way you're gonna put seven dump trucks in that shed. The commercial property he was talking about before, 50 years ago, it was a mena shop. So how much traffic do you have back there? You know? If he paved all that, where's that water? That's a low spot there. There's also a stream that runs through there. If you channel that in there, you're gonna flood guys across the street. So I, you know, I'm opposed to it.
Thank you. Mike, would you care to go ahead and address what would be addressed?
In any site plan improvements, we'd have to meet the current county standards of stormwater, drainage, zoning, I mean, the whole gambit, we'd have to address all that.
Anyone else?
My name is Oday Dean, and this is my wife, Patricia Thompson. We live at the property at the 3310, that neighborhood, 3310 East Main Street. I had a neighbor in Laverne, he had one dump truck, and they had to suffer all the time because of the noise pollution and the dust and environmental pollution. So we moved to this neighborhood because it's very quiet, very calm, and this is very concerning. I don't want to relive the experience that they had with the, like, with the noise and the dust and all that. Besides, the roads are very tiny, like very narrow roads, seven dump trucks, probably will destroy that, those streets. I don't know if the, if the East Main Road, if it's commercial, okay, no problem. But I don't think that Double Springs Road is commercial. I don't think it will handle all that weight. And the gentleman just expressed that he will use the East Main Road for his, like, exit and entrance, not even the other back road, which is highway. So that's very concerning. So if you have, like, if you're with it or against it?
I'm against it as well. I just don't think it's good for the homes and the people.
Speak up just a little bit, please.
I'm against it as well. I don't think it's good for the homeowners in the area. I don't think it's the environment that we moved to this area for. I don't think anybody living there, this is the peace that they want, so.
Thank you.
My name is Alfred Duncan. I go by Bud. I live at 112 Double Springs Road. This property is about six feet below Main Street, so it would have to be filled up because this floods all the time. That water's gonna go somewhere. I've already been flooded twice, some heavy rains. I don't want to do it again. Replace all my ductwork under the house. My neighbor's had to change his floor. And Double Springs is too narrow for dump trucks. There's a small bridge that crosses that stream, right next to where the road goes in. It's gonna collapse it. It's just not built for all this traffic. The road is not built for this traffic. Like they said, there's a sharp S curve right up the road. They finally lowered the speed limit to 35 on this road. They had it at 45, you know? And these people are flying down the road and having accidents all day long. This many trucks, there's no way you can build a big enough building and keep it above the floodwaters without flooding everybody on the other side of the street. So I'm opposed for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions?
My name is Larry Douglas, and I live at 110 Double Springs Road, right across from the property. The creek runs down through that property, and we get a lot of water beside Mr. Duncan, live right beside of him, and we get a little water down through there. And all the noise, and he's right about the road, there's two big S curves right above it, and it won't, dump trucks is gonna be, gonna be a mess. And the road's not wide enough really for dump trucks. The bridge he was talking about is true. We got one bridge there. It's right on my property. And it's, well, I'm just opposed for it because it's, all the diesel smoke and noise, and there's a lot of people live down that road. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one else rising, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Highway Superintendent Seager, you have any comments on some of the comments that we've heard on Double Springs Road? Yes or no? I'm sorry? Thank you for being here, by the way.
It is, it is, it is a narrow road. That is an accurate assessment. It is very small, and even though it's, it's not in bad shape, it, it would struggle with very much truck traffic, additional truck traffic. We did recently reduce the speed limit. That's also an accurate statement, so. The bridge itself, I haven't really, haven't really looked at it lately, but I'd say it was not built for, you know, at least loaded dump truck traffic. So if it's possible to come on East Main from that property, that would probably be the best route, so.
Thank you.
Currently, we do not have any plans to, you know, modify Double Springs Road, so.
Thanks, Ray.
Worth it also.
Commissioners?
I believe, based on the information we've seen, that that area lacks the infrastructure to support zoning to commercial, and I also feel like it's not compatible with the surrounding properties, so I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I have a motion and a second to deny. Item 17-A027. Any other comments or any other questions? All those in favor of the motion to deny 17-A027 for Mr. Hicks? Please say aye. In the opposition, the motion to deny carries. This is also scheduled to be heard before the full County Commission on Thursday, November the 16th, 6:30 PM, right here in this room. And might I say that the County Commission will have the final say, yes or no. Our next scheduled meeting is Monday, October 23rd, 9:00 AM, and I think we're gonna meet in the mess over at the Planning Department.
We're crossing our fingers at this point.
If it's different than that, we will let you know. Any other business done?
No, sir, I don't have any.
Mike? Anything else, Commissioners? Thank you for your attendance and your participation. We are adjourned.